Okay, we're just about ready to commence. So if you'd like to take your seats, please. So first of all, I'd like to thank you all for coming and taking out a Saturday afternoon when you could be Christmas shopping, or at a craft sale, or something that probably would be a lot more fun than this will be. But at any rate, we appreciate you taking the time to come. We have a lot of information to give you today, so we're not going to take a break. If you feel the need to get up and get a coffee, or go to the washroom, or whatever, please do so during the course of the meetings. We have a number of different issues to cover today, and after each section, there'll be an opportunity for questions. So you don't need to save them until the end. And then, again, at the end, we have a question for you where we'll be asking for your opinion. As you can see, we're calling this presentation "It Takes a Community to Run UBIT." That's the title of our strategic plan that we're going to talk about today. And it reflects the board's commitment to involving community members on various committees, and, most recently, involving community members as volunteers on specific projects, like the one that just happened, where we had some community -- excuse me, some community people fix the drainage problems around the fire hall. So that's kind of our model with the strategic plan. Ruth is going to manage the overhead presentation, and she will then switch with me when we come to the budget part. So we can move onward. So this is the agenda for today. We want to talk about the strategic plan, oh, which isn't on there. Okay, well, the strategic plan should be the first bullet. The budget, we have some information to give you about the Kensington Water Agreement and where we're at with that. We want to tell you about a proposed policy change, and we want to give you a bit of an update on the various legal issues that we've been dealing with for the past six months. Next slide. Okay, so the first one is the strategic plan, and you all have a pamphlet that contains a lot of this information. So the first question, I guess, is what is a strategic plan, and why do we need one? Essentially, when we started sitting down and brainstorming all of the things that we thought we wanted to accomplish in the next three to five years, we came up with a huge list. And we thought that we needed to spend some time organizing that into some goals, some specific actions that need to be taken, and we needed to balance that by looking at the past, as well as what we saw coming in the future, and that's primarily Kensington. So this strategic plan incorporates a model that looks something like this. The circle with all of the arrows that feed into each other indicates that this is a work in progress. Just because we've got it written now doesn't mean that that's the end of it. We'll have to evaluate as we go along. New issues will come up as we go through the next several years, and as we accomplish things off the list, we may want to reprioritize. This slide shows the critical issues that we think are facing UBIT in the next five years. And a lot of the resources and activities that we've designed address these specific issues. So of course, we need to deal with this ongoing legal issue from the past. We really feel that we need to, as a community, get beyond this, and to find some ways to encourage a bit of harmony building in the community. There are a number of stakeholders that we have to build relationships with, including the CVRD being one of them, the provincial government, Kensington, and any number of other people that are involved with us. We've identified a number of financial issues that we think need to be addressed, and of course, we think that we need to look at a plan to build a new fire hall and/or fire hall administration complex, and to actually do some concerted planning about that involving the community. The water filtration issue is a VHA requirement that we have a plan in place to move towards the 4-3-2-1 water filtration system. With Kensington going ahead and building the water treatment plant for us, that issue will be addressed. If for some reason that doesn't happen, then we have to pay for it. We have aging water infrastructure in our community. The average lifespan for the water pipes is six years. We have a lot of pipes in our community that are now 50 years old, and we have maybe a 10-year window before they start failing and we start having to replace them. So we need to look at some infrastructure planning. As a board, we've identified the need to look at the roles and responsibilities of our staff, and to make sure that people are being utilized effectively and to the fullest extents of their skills and capabilities. We also have an issue regarding the water license transfer, which started in about 2007, when the provincial government and the CVRD began talking about a regional water strategy. That led to the belief, I guess, that UBIT should hand over its water license to the CVRD as part of that process. When we get down to the Kensington issue, we'll tell you a little bit more about what we've done about that, and what some of the implications of that might be. The plan for Kensington regarding the building of the water treatment plant is that they're going to build a temporary plant where the existing reservoir is on MacLeod Road. UBIT has to find some land that would then house the permanent water treatment plant. So we have to find that land. We have a whole host of issues around our facility, this building being one, which is very inefficient, quite expensive, and of course, we have the fire hall building, which is a problem, as you all know. UBIT does own several properties, and we, at some point, will need to look at how we're going to rationalize all of that, and how we can move forward in terms of some kind of new complex. And finally, we have an issue with this property here. As it turns out, there was a notation on the sale of this property that was placed on there by the Crown. And what it means is that the school division still controls how we use and what we can do with about 40% of this piece of property. Because of that, there's no way we could sell this property. Getting another mortgage, which we have to renegotiate next year, could be problematic because we don't have currently full titles to this land. That's an issue that has been -- the previous boards have been aware of that issue since day one, and we figure that it's probably going to take at least a year of working with various government departments to resolve that issue. The government departments and the school board have all assured us that we all want to get this sorted out, and that there's no interest at all in putting roadblocks in the way. But just working through the process is going to be a long and maybe complicated issue. So those are the big issues that we think UBIT has to deal with in the next five years. So based on all of that, we've come up with a mission statement. And I guess I'll just read it. We're thinking that what we want UBIT to be is to be recognized by not only the community, but by our employees as balancing a number of things: best practices, cost-effectiveness, and efficiency in providing the three core services that we're mandated to provide. We also see ourselves as being leaders that are responsive to the needs and the concerns of the community. And we've come up with a definition of what our mission statement is. UBIT is only responsible for three things. We're responsible for a volunteer fire rescue service, we're responsible for drinking water, and we're responsible for street lighting. So we've identified kind of issues in three main areas. We've identified things that we think need to be done administratively, legally, of course, and financially. And we've developed goals for each of our kind of main service areas that reflect those issues. So for the board, we've identified four goals. To improve public relations with the community, to increase the knowledge of the trustees, which has been one of the recommendations that's come from the ombudsman, our commitment to increase participation of the community in decision-making as we go along and where possible, and to improve the structure governing the board, which is primarily a policy and For the administration, we've identified a couple of goals. We need to look at improving the efficiency of the administration, and Ruth has started that process, and we've already found a number of things that we can improve that we think will make it more cost-effective and more efficient. We also need to look at financial sustainability. For public works, we want to improve the quality of water, and again, that relates to the 4-3-2-1 issue, and hopefully, by Kensington. We want to maintain our leak rate at about 10%, which is what it is now. And Dan tells us that that's pretty good, especially considering that we have such old infrastructure. And just keep your fingers crossed that we don't have any major breaks, because it costs about $400 per foot to fix a broken water line. With the amount of money that we currently have in our renewal and replacement and capital funds for water, we would have just enough money to maybe fix one block. So when you think that in the next 10 years, we're going to become increasingly more vulnerable to breaks, we have about 10 years to get some money together. The other things that we want to look at for public works is to look at some efficiencies and effectiveness within the actual department. Currently, the water tolls that we collect do not cover the operational costs, and we're supplementing those operational costs with a portion of your parcel taxes. We also want to increase revenue, and one of the things that we did this year was that we approved a 10% penalty on people that haven't paid their water bill sometimes. So, I mean, it's a small amount, but we'll certainly be looking at other ways to try and increase revenue. And we need to do some capital planning. For the fire rescue service, one of the issues that we've identified is that the fire rescue service is quite separate from UBIT, and we really do believe that we need to strengthen that relationship between that service and the board. We need to look at operational effectiveness, and Ruth is already beginning to have conversations with our fire chief about some things that can be done to make that more efficient and effective. And of course, we need to do some capital planning. Right now, we've committed to doing essential repairs on the old fire hall to give us five One of the issues that is going to delay getting a fire hall built is that the piece of property that Kensington have designated for us has to be subdivided, and it has to be fully serviced before we can even apply to get the title. So we don't know how long that's going to take, but it's not going to happen overnight. And the street lighting, we've committed to continuing to apply the dark sky policy. This essentially is a contracted service where we pay BC Hydro to look after this So for each of those goals, we've identified strategies, and we've identified objectives, and we have a long list of activities that we think are going to get us there. We've decided what things we want to focus on in year one, and our primary focus for year one is the water work system and the administration. Year two, our primary focus will be on the fire department. So we have essentially about a 20-page to-do list. It's going to take us three or four years to get there. The entire strategic plan is on the website, and you're free to take a look at it there. And you have the pamphlet that has kind of the main goals that we've designed. So are there any questions about the strategic plan?
Can you tell us further about the dark light policy or what I were saying? Was it he were paying Hydro? Just explain that.
John is asking a question about the dark sky policy. UBIT has a bylaw that spells out the kind of lighting that is required for street lighting. And we do pay BC Hydro to install and to maintain. It's to the type of lights that they use. Where some of the older lights are lights that shine up into the sky, and the new ones that are part of this dark sky policy actually shine down onto the road. So it's a matter of switching those lights as we can. Any other questions?
Just one more on the street lighting. Where is the revenue side of the street lighting? Is that through parcel taxes, or?
No. The income or the revenue that we get for street lighting comes from your property taxes. So the property tax portion covers the fire department and street lighting. Parcel taxes and water tolls cover the water system. Anything else?
When you're talking about the water quality items in the public works schools?
Yes.
You mentioned that we hope to have this 4-3-2-1 project up, and you said, hopefully with Kensington's help. I thought that was part of the agreement that they had promised to provide.
It is. Yeah, it is.
So hopefully, I missed a beat, or did you know about that?
Well, we're going to talk about the Kensington Water Agreement a little later on, and give you a bit more information about that. But certainly, from the board's perspective, we're expecting that this is going to go ahead, and that Kensington is going to build the water treatment plant, and they're going to start building houses.
So we?
Yes.
What is 4-3-2-1? There's a long question and a long answer, don't worry about it.
Well, maybe I'll get one of my colleagues to answer that for you.
I don't have the legislation with me. But basically, it's taken the water systems to a point where the particular solid matter in the water is reduced to a minimum, and that the bugs are dead as well. Some of the water systems across Canada have not been that way. I think we have a pretty clean system right now, but we don't have a particular amount taken out. That's why you have a little bit of brown stain at times in your water. But the system we're talking about, the brown stain will be taken out as well.
So the 4-3-2-1 doesn't relate to the time period or something?
No, it's not a timeframe. It's different kinds of filtration. Right now, the only thing that we do to our water is put chlorine in it. This actually filters out things.
Can you talk about the temporary filtration plant? Like, why is that necessary? Like, why do we have to do that to try and address the VHA 2014 limit? You said we were having a temporary limit?
Yeah, my understanding, and again, is -- my understanding is that the temporary water treatment plant is going in first because it can happen a lot quicker than waiting for the permanent site to be built. The permanent site will include a reservoir, and it's going to be out by the lake. And the plan is that this temporary site will address the water needs for up to 250 new houses. Once we get beyond that, then the capacity has to increase, and the plan is to move it.
And that would supply everybody's water, right?
Yes.
You have to.
Yes. No, the plan is that the water that comes through the treatment plant will be hooked up to the existing Union Bay system.
So we have to do the temporary stuff with the VHA limits? Like, they have a deadline, don't they?
Yeah. The VHA requirements have been around for a few years, and UBIT in the past was required to submit a plan on how they were going to get there, and had asked for a couple of Ruth, maybe you know the date for the last extension, do you?
I believe the date that we're supposed to have it built by is sometime in 2015. It's actually upstairs on our bulletin board, right at the front. Bulletin board, it tells you exactly all the deadlines, but I don't have that. I could run up on one of the brakes and grab it before you let me know in turn.
So even if there is kind of a deadline, that doesn't necessarily mean that we can't negotiate something else. I mean, I think what the government is interested in is that communities are working towards having these new requirements in place and being compliant.
I was wondering, why do we need a temporary one? And you can see in the future, there's going to be a permanent one. Why spend on resources on a temporary one?
Can I answer that, Carol?
Sure.
I think the idea of the temporary plant, as Carol already said, it can happen a lot faster, and we do not have land up at the -- anywhere as close to the lake, we have to acquire some land, which we're going to try and do from the Timber West, or they own a lot of the land around the lake. We have had some negotiations with them, and hope to be able to secure a piece of property from them. And that's where the -- eventually, the treatment plant would go, add a new reservoir, which would be quite a large reservoir. And one of the problems is there is no power up around the lake there. It's just additional cost. The idea of the temporary treatment is just going to -- it can happen a lot faster, and it will instigate, hopefully, 250 new homes, and that's up to Kensington to move it up to the new location when that happens.
Any other questions at all?
Yes.
Is the figure at $100 per foot to the 3D?
I'm just going on a situation that happened in Royston, where they had 250 feet of water pipe that they had to replace, and it cost them $100,000. So that works out to be about $400 a foot. Jerry?
Carol, can I get back to anything to Kensington, or can I reach for a question?
Oh, we've got a long ways to go yet.
Unfortunately, I have to leave very soon, so if you don't mind, I'd just like you to make a couple comments or?
Well, ask a question.
Basically, my understanding is, as you know, I've said it 20 times before, is we do have some continued problems with peat loss in our water, et cetera. My concern is with this filtration system that's being suggested by Kensington, it will, in fact, remove some of the peat, but at the same time, there will be a cost involved from a point of replacing the filters. And I discussed that this -- I'm replacing the filter right now, and it's my own system. And they continually tell us, I was told by my central builders, that we can't -- your filter system, they won't warranty it still because of peat loss, et cetera. So my question is that, there seems to be, after researching, there seem to be lots of alternatives, different types of filtration systems. And if we move it, so my question is, is that will UBIT continue to look at different types of filtration systems, other than the just?
Let me just tell you what the board decided at the last meeting, and that was to approve in principle the DAF system, which is dissolved air flotation, which is the water system that has been proposed by Kensington and by Correx. And we have also given Kensington the go-ahead to begin to put together the specifications for our specific plant. UBIT as an organization has to approve the final plan, because of course, in the end, we're going to own it. So, but I'll maybe get Alan to talk a little bit about the filtration and the peat, because he's taken on the job for the board of being our technical water Kensington guy.
Thank you, Carol. The flotation system will remove all the suspended solid particles. Not only do you have a flotation device which floats all the particles to the top, or 90% of them to the top, you then run the product through a sand filter with a medium, a medium sand filter medium, which then filters out the balance of the product. And there are two filters, so you And there are two filters, so you run one first part of the day and then you switch it off and then you switch over to the other one and you clean the one, back flush it automatically with an automatic pumps and then you run the second one. So you've always got water running through the system. You've always got a filter coming up on stream again. And then subsequent to that, there's a UV light situation which will kill the bugs. This all goes along with the 4321. And then subsequent to that, we still will put chlorine in the system in a very small quantity to maintain clarification of the or stop bugs growing in the pipe systems because some of the water will sit in the pipes for quite a long time as it moves down the hill and up, up and down the beach.
So Alan, just, that's interesting that you mentioned the sand, sand filter because that's one of the things I just researched just recently. And that seemed like a very positive thing from a point of view, so it's almost like a double filtration system?
No, it's not double. There's two beds. There's a left and a right bed so that you can run one and the other one you can be cleaning. When that one's clean, then you can run the other one. But it takes about 12 to 24 hours before you need to clean.
So that should help with removing our costs. Well, my concern is that the cost of a regular filter system could be prohibitive with all of the peat. So you're saying that this will eliminate some of those problems?
Absolutely. And one of the interesting facts we found out recently is more of our water is in upwelling water than runoff water, running off the ground. It's coming up from underground springs and with the deep water intake. I think you'll find that the water you're getting now compared to about three or four years ago is far better with the deep water intake.
So Jerry, the issue of the peat islands, the Public Works Committee have not kind of turned their mind to whether something needs to happen to them or what that might be at this point. But we're certainly aware that it's an issue. Erin?
So is the reason that we're putting in a temporary treatment plant because Kensington wants to build 240 houses?
Yes. And they're paying for it.
But they haven't done a storm water management plan where they're building?
That's the CBRD's area of responsibility. So I don't know.
Carol, can you just clarify one thing? The 240, that's 240 in addition to the existing Union Bay residence?
Yes.
I think maybe some people didn't comprehend that.
Yeah, no, the 650 Union Bay houses plus 240 additional houses, yes. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, the next issue. Is the budget. So I'll turn this over to Ruth and she's going to walk through the budget with you. You have this as a handout as well.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm continually impressed by how many people in this community come out to all these meetings. I think it's amazing how engaged you all are in your local affairs and I applaud you for it. So when we were given directions to create a budget this year, we wanted to estimate conservative revenues and be realistic in our operating expenditures and do what we could to reduce operating costs. And of course, that, and we also wanted to reduce legal expenditures. And then we put together a budget from that. So Carol, could you move on to the next slide? So in terms of revenue, primarily, we get our revenue from three sources. We collect water tolls and we are collecting $216,000 in water tolls annually. We collect property tax, or pardon me, parcel taxes and we've budgeted for $182,000 in parcel taxes. And then we have property taxes. And there's three items on there. We've got it on the spreadsheet, it goes across by department. So you have property taxes for your fire rescue services, property taxes for your building and property taxes for the street lighting portion. Now, we, our administration upstairs, we collect the water tolls and the parcel taxes. And the property tax portion, the way we, the way we get that money is it, we prepare a budget annually and we just did that at our last board meeting in November. And once we prepare that budget, we send it to the provincial government. And then the provincial government for rural areas, what they do is they estimate taxes. And the taxes that you pay to the CBRD include a small sliver of taxes for our budgeted fire services and administrative and street lighting costs. And then eventually what happens after taxes are collected by the CBRD, in the course of the following year, the province passes those property taxes back to us. In preparing the budget this year, we've assumed the same number of houses and connections as in the past few years. And as I explained at the board meeting, our budgeted revenues are slightly less than budgeted for in the previous two years. But that's because we're actually closer to actual revenues. We've taken items from revenue that don't belong on the income statement and reduced amounts such as rent to reflect the actual rents we can expect to receive. In order to maintain a status quo budget on the revenue side, we had to increase property taxes by approximately 1%. So last year, total property taxes were $402,000. This year, they were $406,200. And parcel tax has been increased by $10 annually. So our total budget of revenue for this year is $830,300, which while less than budgeted last year, is closer to our real expected revenue. On the expense side, we've budgeted for less operational expense in 2012 than in 2011. We've reduced overall planned expenditure by $81,000 in 2012 over the current year. 94% of this planned expense reduction comes from the administrative portion of the budget and will be in the areas of reduced legal costs, reduced auditing and accounting costs and reduced administrative salaries. The remaining 6% of the savings will come from reducing departmental budget areas where we've proven to be under budget this year and we can expect to spend less in 2012. With the reduction in operations and administrative expense, we plan to put aside $155,000 into our capital funds. In terms of capital funds, we currently have an infrastructure deficit that could run into the millions of dollars. And that's what Carol was talking about earlier. We don't, we have a capital plan which was produced by McElhany Engineers a couple of years ago. And they were telling us at that time that we should be putting in excess of $200,000 a year into savings for just water pipe replacement, water mains replacement. We haven't been doing that. So we are in the process of doing some new capital planning now and doing some new financial modeling. But as Carol said earlier, when it comes to replacing water pipes, it's an expensive process. So we're, we're beginning the process now of starting to put away funds to ensure that we have some capital available to us when we need it. So at the end of 2010, we had total capital reserves and savings set aside of just over $440,000. But in the first four months of this year, there were several redemptions of term deposits in order to meet operational needs. So since June, we've managed to save some money again. And I've had difficulty in reconciling the accounts just because of record, insufficient records, but I know enough now to tell you that we'll probably end 2011 at virtually the same place we were at the end of 2010. So we, in the first part of the year, we spent some capital funds, but we've managed this year, we're pretty much the same place we were at the end of 2010. The $155,000 to be set aside for 2012 is for both the fire department and public works infrastructure replacement. So you can see from that that there's a provision for the fire department of $94,000 and just $61,000 for the water. Our last formal capital plan for public works alone done by McElhany Engineers in 2009 contemplated setting aside over $200,000 a year for waterworks, infrastructure repair and replacement. And of the $155,000 to be set aside in 2012, $61,000 is for public works. So we're about a third of what we had hoped to be in 2009. With no new capital provision set aside in 2011 and only about a third of what is needed in 2012, we're falling behind right now in our capital planning. And I'm simply telling you this so that you understand that we have some work to do to come up with a plan that will meet our infrastructure needs over the next several years. I believe I can speak for the board and myself in saying that we plan to start building those reserves each year from now on. And the capital plan prepared by, for public works in 2009 was imperfectly implemented because insufficient capital funds have been set aside since then. Our committees are starting the process of revising our capital plans over the next several months, but we don't yet have a capital plan. So that is, that is a project for this year. So that's, that's my financial budget report here. Do we have questions?
Yes.
Not really a question. I'd just like to thank you for laying it up where I can find it and understand it.
Well, I think we are a public agency and we should be accountable to the public. So it's always been the case wherever else I've been that this is how you do things and I would have assumed that that's how we should be doing things.
So moving right along, you're going to go out of here with a head very full of information, I think. We want to talk about the Kensington Water Agreement. So there are five things that Kensington and Ubid and the CBRD have to reach agreement on before Kensington can apply for building permits. Four of those conditions are contained in the CBRD Master Development Agreement. First one is boundary changes. But that is, is that some of the Kensington lands were not included within the Union Bay Improvement District boundary. And that required us going to the government and asking them to amend our letters patent and to change those boundaries. The second condition is that Ubid and Kensington had to reach agreement about water provision for phase one of the development, which is up to 500 houses. And then in the Master Development Agreement, the CBRD has to endorse that agreement between Ubid and KIP. And finally, in the Master Development Agreement, there's a condition that Ubid has to hand over its water licenses to the CBRD. So those are the four conditions that are in the Master Development Agreement. We've got two of them done. The boundaries have been changed and that happened in about February, I think. And in September, the final notices were put in the paper about that. So that, that's complete. All of the Kensington lands now lie within the Union Bay Improvement District boundary. We also have a water agreement between Ubid and Kensington and that's the agreement that was approved by the previous board in April, which is on the website. In May, that agreement went to the CBRD and they and their lawyers began looking at that agreement and reviewing it because essentially what the CBRD has to do is they have to sign off on it and say that that agreement is reasonable. So we've had some conversations with the CBRD over the summer. There are some issues that have been identified and we can talk about those a little bit more. The other piece to this Master Development Agreement is the transfer of the water license. And that is not done. So we were working away with the CBRD about having them endorse the Ubid-KIP water agreement and things kind of seemed to be coming along. We've had discussions with lawyers. They've had discussions with lawyers. We've been kind of working through that process. And simultaneously, the Ubid Board began to look at the transfer of the water license. And what, what that would mean is we have two licenses. We have a license that says that we can dam Langley Lake and we have a license that says we can distribute the water that's in that lake. And it would be giving both of those licenses to the CBRD who would then assume responsibility for the source of water. Ubid in this plan would have retained responsibility for distributing the water. So we would still be responsible for the dam. We'd still be responsible for all of the pipes. We'd still be charging water tolls, that kind of thing. This transfer would result in the CBRD then negotiating with Ubid for a bulk water agreement so that Ubid would then begin to be charged for bulk water in addition to whatever we had to charge for the distribution phase. What the board has done is that we have decided that we are not going to hand over our water license. And the reason that we've decided that is because, first of all, it would be, in our view, an increased cost for water that we get for free now in terms of the bulk water portion of it. We also believe that just because the CBRD and Kensington have agreed that we should do this, that doesn't bind Ubid to agreeing to do this. We also believe, after having talked to several people in various departments in the government, that the Ministry of Community, Culture and Sport, whatever they're called, does not have the authority to tell us that we should do it. And in fact, the government has never said to Ubid, you must do this. They've always said, we think you should do it, but we want you to negotiate with the CBRD about how it will happen. In our view, the only department that can make us do this is the Department of Natural Resources, who are the department that actually issued the water license. And their position is, is that they won't do it unless the community asks to have it transferred. So what, what the board has kind of come to is that we don't think there's anything in this transfer that would be good for Ubid. We don't think that the people that are saying we should do it have the jurisdiction to make us do it. to make us do it. And although previous boards have always, to our understanding anyway, talked about not wanting to do it, no one has ever formally told the CVRD. So about a month ago, we sent a letter to the CVRD and told them we were not going to transfer the water license. CVRD has responded by saying that their approval of the UBIT/KIP water agreement was related to them seeing that they were going to get the water license. So both of these issues right now are kind of in limbo. A letter has been sent to the government, organized to begin talking about this issue and trying to find a way around it. Brian McMahon is very aware of the position that we've taken on this issue. He understands why we've done it, and none of us want this decision to hold things up. So all we can say at this point is that it's an issue, it could be thorny, we don't know what the end result is going to be, but we're working on it. The fifth condition that has to happen before Kensington can get a building permit is that UBIT has to approve the plans for the water treatment system that they're going to build. So over the course of the summer, Cleve and his Public Works Committee have been meeting and reviewing all kinds of documents. And recently, with Alan joining the board, we've given him the job of being our techie regarding this water stuff. We have, in principle, approved the DAF water treatment system, and we have given Kensington permission to go ahead and begin to finalize the specifications for this treatment plant. Once that's done, and once some of these other issues between the CVRD and the government and us are sorted out, the board will still have to give the final approval for the actual plant. Because, as I said earlier, once it's built, we assume ownership of it eventually, and we assume responsibility for the ongoing operation and maintenance of it. So, questions? Dennis?
The CVRD was anticipating getting this water system, and they did finally accept that they're not going to do it. Well, they watered down the requirements for judging, so that they won't make a less restrictive agreement or catch.
Well, none of us are quite sure what will happen with the master development agreement. I mean, it would be really easy if all they could do was take out that condition out of the master development and carry on, but there are probably other implications that they would need to look at. I can't answer that. Yes, Dennis?
Now, did Kensington build the 500 new homes? Or do they have to just build the 250 that they built in the beginning before they put in the new plant?
They can only build 250 new homes with the temporary plant, because the temporary plant will only have capacity to add on that many more houses for Union Bay.
So you can't start keep building that, can't keep building and do us 500 homes?
Not until we purchase land or get land, and the permanent water treatment plant would then be moved and possibly added on to at a new site. Jerry?
Well, where I stand here now, it seems like we're in quite a position here, finding where we probably hoped we would be, is we have control of our water and without our water, we don't develop it. And now we have a situation where CVRD assume that we really have given them our water. We've got Kensington needing the agreement to go through because of the master agreement. So I think personally that you as a board have quite a dog ahead of you, because in my position now, you guys have just moved to the top of the rung from the point of bargaining. I mean, without our water, I mean, whatever. And I know we all want this, most people in this room indicate that they'd like the development to go through, because we've said that vocally many times. But here we are, the shoe seems to be on the other foot now here a little bit, so my question would be, is will the board look at this as being a position of, I think, a positive position for us as holders of the license, I mean, and why?
Well, again, others have things that they want to say. I think the position that the board has taken is that we've really taken a step on just laying it out on the table what position of the board is. And all of us have agreed that we want this to happen. I mean, we all have an interest in getting this development up and going, whether it's for water or development purposes, or the CVRD has an interest in making it happen as well. So we're all working towards the same goal, is whether we can deal with the different interests that all of the parties have. Yes?
How did the CVRD get the clause in there between to do it to UBIT and Kensington? I mean, UBIT is the control of the water and the license thing, but the chances of it, like, how does CVRD get an absolute agreement?
Well, the question is, how did the CVRD put this clause into the agreement if it involved Kensington and the CVRD and not UBIT?
Yeah, so between Kensington and UBIT, how can CVRD pass that agreement?
Well, it goes back to, again, 2007, when the CVRD felt that they were given direction by the government to do this, and it was all part of the regional water strategy, right? And the fact that UBIT, since 2007, has not gone long, but hasn't clearly stated its position. Yes?
On the previous page, it talks about negotiations or discussions between, I didn't know who OPUS is, Kensington Corp and OPUS.
OPUS is the engineering?
Principal Engineering Contractor.
Okay.
And they work for, they work for them now, okay.
So OPUS is the technical engineering firm that works for Kensington. John?
Just wondering what role our Area A Representative, Mr. Joll, is taking in this, and what is his, has he shown any leadership in trying to resolve this issue with, or he seems to be very quiet about all of this in the law here?
We have had discussions with Bruce Joll about this, and discussions with him about it long before the board or government took this formal position. So he's certainly the party to the discussions, and I don't know, I can't answer for what he's done within the CVRD, but he's certainly aware of the issue and understands where we're coming from.
Do you know if he's supportive of our position, and will he speak to the community about it for us?
I don't know.
You don't think he's supportive?
I don't know.
You've talked about the 250 homes this new filtration plant will serve, and then if Kensington wants to build more, he has to build a bigger system or whatever. Is there anything to prevent Kensington from selling the rest of his lands to other landowners? And would they be responsible for building the new larger system for the community? Or would you be in a very difficult position to try and recover that?
So the question is, is what happens if Kensington sells their lands partway through this process, and what are the obligations, right? My understanding of the MDA and the UBIT/KIP water agreement is that whoever purchases those lands is obligated to whatever those agreements currently say. So if it isn't Kensington, whoever buys it would have to do it.
But it is now subdivided, my understanding, so is any further subdivision prevented? Or can he sell subdivided parcels that say individual landowners, you know, not corporation, but just somebody that's already out by, you know, that can be somehow, like, the law or whatever?
Maybe I'll get Bruce to talk a little bit about this. I mean, I think that as a developer, he can certainly sell off parts of this land to other people to develop areas.
But then he's responsible for building the filtration plant.
Did you add anything, Bruce?
Yeah, my understanding that KIP could, he's not a builder, he's a developer. He's gonna develop these lots and put in the subdivision, put the lots in, and he's gonna probably sell 10 lots to a contractor who's gonna build 10 new homes. Or he's gonna sell them one at a time to people. I believe, my recollection of the master development agreement is that he cannot sell even, like, a bulk portion of the project, not individual lots, without the approval of CVRD and UBIT. So I think he's committed to the whole development, but as for individual lots, he's, that's what's gonna happen, they're gonna get built 10, 20, 30 at a time by...
Well, I understand that by conservative, that, you know, he gets the 250 before, and then what's left over, he disappears, God in mind here, or whatever. And the existing property, which is where the KIP comes to build the permanent facility, there's nobody there to collect the money from other than individual property or are they responsible to build our new system or not? That's the big point, which I think. Who's responsible ultimately? Is KIP have a bond that ties him to doing the other works, or ensuring?
Oh, I know that the CVRD have imposed a bond, a surety bond on him.
Do you have a water agreement?
I don't know for sure. I mean, my understanding is that whoever assumes responsibility for this land is bound by the agreements that are in place.
Can you look into that for us, Mr.?
Yeah. Okay. Dennis?
It looks like there's a tax on that land. Was it all subdivision, or is it like that, the rest of the parcel tax coming off 250 homes?
Well, once a house is actually built, those people will have to pay the $500 water connection fee that everybody has to pay when they hook up to our water system. And as Union Bay residents, they'll have to pay parcel tax like everybody else. What they won't have to pay initially is a CEC, which is the $8,100 that people pay to contribute towards any other infrastructure. And the reason that they don't pay that initially is because they're putting all the infrastructure in. So they're putting in the water treatment plant, they're putting in all of that stuff. And until they use up that credit, UBIT won't collect CECs from them.
Well, Kensington's in the UBIT boundary now, how much taxes do they pay UBIT? How much money does Red?
Well, they pay taxes for whatever their parcel of land is worth, according to the B.C. government. I'm not sure if I get your question.
Do they get a parcel tax, pay a parcel tax on that whole people?
No, they don't pay a parcel tax. John?
Is the 250 houses that they've developed on the temporary filtration system, is that the capacity of water from the existing lake that the community can handle?
I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but...
Jim? Yeah, Jim.
Jim, what it boils down to is that the capacity of the apartment they've offered right now will satisfy the 600 and something houses in the town, in the existing mill or town, and will also allow 250 more houses to be built, for them to be able to continue. They've done this as a phasing situation, because it brings in the cash flow situation. To build the new reservoir and facilities up at the top of the hill would be extraordinarily expensive without the rest of the houses going ahead, and there's no way you can build 1,000 houses and sell them all quickly. So what they're doing, in a phased basis, they sell, they put the temporary water treatment plant in, they get the 250 houses going, they've got a cash flow going. So with that, now that they can then move towards, up at the top of the hill, putting the final water treatment and reservoir, then they can build their next phases of houses.
If other developers, such as Christie, decided during this period that the 250 houses should be available, will the water supply depend on that capacity as well?
There's a limitation. The UBIT water agreement says there's no more than 10 houses to be built a year or connected in a year for the duration of the agreement.
When they finish, the 250 houses, what impact does that have on UBIT?
So the question is, once they build 250 houses, what income, what impact does that have on UBIT's income? Well, we get to charge them water tolls, we get to charge them parcel tax, we get to charge them tax, property taxes for fire and street lighting, we get to charge them a connection fee when they hook up to water.
The revenue will probably be small, a third, okay, a little less than a third.
You'd assume 650 homes now and 900 homes later, just a little less than a third increase in revenue.
What? We're doubling the number of houses in UBIT, then a few of that.
Jerry?
Last question, modest.
You've said that before.
Has there been any mention of Christie, the landlord of Old Spire Junk Property, and UBIT in our containment area, and then the First Nation people on BL7, there's an education there, they're looking for this building up also. So has there been, I mean, that will definitely affect all of this formula that we're talking about here, so is that, is there any indication so far?
Okay, so the question is, has Mr. Christie and the First Nation expressed interest in building, and what impact would that have? We haven't had any conversations like that, but as Alan just said, the UBIT/KIP water agreement limits the number of new houses per year to 10. So outside of the Kensington lands, yeah. So that would be 10 in Craig Derrick or Old Union Bay or Mystery Beach or wherever, total of 10.
So that could be BL7 or...
Could be anywhere, could be anywhere, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else before we move on? Okay, next slide. One of the things that this board has been told for the last couple of years is that people really would like to have an advanced poll for the election. And our policy committee is looking at a new elections policy that would incorporate an advanced poll. What that means is that we would no longer have nominations from the floor, because if you have an advanced poll and people are... Because if you have an advanced poll and people are voting a week before the AGM, they need to know who these selection of candidates are. So there would be no nominations from the floor on the day of the AGM unless we got into all kinds of difficulties. So because that's a significant policy change for this community, we wanted just to alert you to the fact that we're looking at that. If you have opinions, particularly negative opinions about that, you need to let one of your trustees know that because at this point, we're of the opinion that the community wants to proceed. Okay? People have expressed concern about not being here on the day of the AGM and yet still want to be able to vote. And a lot of people want to just come and vote and they don't want to have to hang around for the whole meeting. Okay? So that's the main motivation. The other, the other issue is that if people declare ahead of time, then the community has an opportunity to hear from those candidates or to find out from those candidates what they think about different issues. Whereas from the floor, you only have a two-minute little talk.
Well, if it's serious, they could be, like, they could go ahead and do it anyway. They could put the candidacy ahead and go around and talk to people.
Oh, of course, of course. Of course. But it, it all hinges on whether you want an advanced poll or not. Okay? Yes?
Would there be a cost to administering an advanced poll or...
No, no. We would probably just set up a table here in, in the office and people would come in and vote whatever day the advanced poll was. Okay?
So would we, sorry, would we hear more specifics before that in terms of policy?
Yes, yeah. Well, what, what would, what will happen is that a draft policy will be kind of finalized within the committee process. That policy then would be brought forward to the board. We would probably table it to the next month so that there was a whole month in between it being presented and when the board actually voted on it. And then once it's approved, we would have to inform the community and make sure that people understood what the change was. Yes?
What would you say, what would you say the most serious objection the US receives to this thing seems to me to be totally sensible. What would be a serious objection to this thing?
Well, the, the objection that we've heard is that it kind of changes the flavor of how Union Bay does things because till now, it's kind of been a low-key, people from the floor, agree to volunteer. What this does is that it potentially opens the gate, I guess, for a more formal campaign, more formal kind of presentations by candidates, possibly more adversarial, yeah.
So it's fairer, it's more representative, it's more visible, and it's not seeming any more risky to be bought, and it's not seeming more expensive to have that.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I, and I think that that's kind of where the board generally is coming from, but again, if you object or if you have concerns about it, you need to let the board know. John?
I'd like to just clarify that answer. It really fosters partisan politics. It has to because you have a certain view now, a certain number of people doing it. And if you have an advanced poll, the only way reasonably to, to, to participate in that is to have an alternate point of view. The community has been based on volunteerism, as Carol rightly pointed out. And I think that if you have an advanced poll and you end up with a structure that requires well-advanced planning, you're essentially creating party politics. We have one party now, which is fine, but in order to be able to compete with that or discuss that region, well, you have to have contrary point of view that traditionally has been brought in, I suppose, in the floor of the election, but now will be brought into the community and that's partisan politics will be a violation of democracy.
Okay, let's, let's not debate this here now, okay? If, if you have an alternate opinion, let a trustee know. Walter, question?
Carol, why don't we just send out a ballot breakdown to everybody in the community here so that, yes, you know, let the community decide what they want. I don't know. We can have a grand poll.
Okay. Let, let your trustee know. We'll move along. Okay, Bruce? Okay, so this is the, the last area that we want to cover, which kind of reflects the past and a lot of the issues that the board has been dealing with so far. In this kind of section, we want to cover three things. We want to talk to you about the indemnification bylaw that UBIT has had in place since 2007. We want to give you a bit of an overview of some of the legal and quasi-legal issues that were on the list that we're, we've been addressing. And we want to give you an update on the litigation that is currently ongoing. So we'll talk about the indemnification part first. And you have a handout for this. This is a bylaw that's been on the books since 2007. It's a typical kind of bylaw that governments have. And they're normally put in place to protect volunteers, trustees, employees, firefighters, anybody that may be making decisions that the improvement district would then become responsible for. Let me give you an example of what an indemnification bylaw would do. Say that we have in Union Bay a fire. And let's say that the fire department, for whatever reason, doesn't respond. And the house burns down. And that landowner decides to sue not only UBIT, but all the firemen, all the fire department. What this indemnification bylaw does is that it says that in that kind of a situation, UBIT is responsible for the defense of not only itself, but all of the individuals that may have been involved in that particular action. If the neighbors decide that they should sue on behalf of the community, the same thing happens. UBIT is responsible for all of the legal costs to protect those people that have been involved in the situation. This indemnification policy applies to all of the current and former trustees, all of the current and former employees, and anyone who volunteers in any capacity for UBIT. So I know that there's been a lot of discussion in the community about indemnification and what that means. It only applies when someone is suing the organization or the people in the organization. It does not apply if the organization or individuals sue somebody else. Okay? So when we get into some of this other discussion, this is one of the issues that the board is having to take into account as we deal with other legal issues. So there were a number of things on the list when we first came to office in May. And I'm happy to say that we started ticking off some of them because it's been a huge, huge task. So the first one is the Reynolds water disconnection, where UBIT was sued for disconnecting that water service. That matter has been dealt with by the court. It was thrown out on a, a technical and procedural kind of issue. At this point in time, we're waiting to hear from our insurer on whether they're going to cover our legal costs in that and how many of our legal costs. And it's on the list as a bylaw that we want to look at within our policy and bylaw committee because there are some things that need to be tightened up in how that happened. The other lawsuit that we had in May was with the Bams family and that related to capital expenditure charge dispute where incorrect information was provided to them and they sued UBIT because they felt that that decision or that information had affected further decisions they had made. Ruth has discovered how that happened and why the incorrect information was given out and has changed the process on how those kinds of questions are handled within UBIT. So hopefully that's not going to happen again and it is resolved. Again, we're waiting to hear from the insurance company about how much or if they're going to cover any of our legal costs for that. The third issue that we've dealt with since May is two complaints that were sent to the Privacy Commissioner where personal information was collected for one reason and was disclosed to other people for a totally different reason, which is in violation of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. We have resolved that matter. In fact, the complaint was upheld and again, we're dealing with that through our policy committee. We'll be bringing forward some policies about how the organization has to deal with personal information. The other issue that is mostly resolved is a complaint that's been made by four individuals in our community to the Ombudsman. And the, the issues that have been, the Ombudsman has been asked to investigate and to comment on are the December decision by the board to close meetings to the public, the water disconnection to Mary Reynolds, a number of conflict of interest issues regarding Kensington and regarding how this litigation was handled, and an amendment to the UBIT meeting bylaw that was passed on April the 20th. The board has now responded to the Ombudsman in a total three times. Our board has responded twice. We think that we're finished. And what, what the Ombudsman does is he, that position is created by the government and the role of the Ombudsman is to look at different governing bodies around the province, whether it's a city or municipality or an improvement district, to ensure that they are following the legislation, that they're being consistent with their own bylaws, and that they're employing fair kind of administration of those bylaws to the citizens of the community. So those are the three kinds of areas that they look at and he has been asked to investigate those issues. We're hoping that early in the new year, he will be able to close this investigation and at that point, he will issue a, a final report that again, we're hoping will be able to be released to the public. There may be some confidential stuff in there. We don't know what he's going to say, but certainly it's our intent to share that report with the community. Okay, our last slide, outstanding.
Well, I would just like to thank you very much, you and the board for having a special meeting. And as the other person said, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all the hard work that you've done on our behalf.
Excuse me, excuse me.
That wasn't a question. So I also, I would like to commend Bruce and Cleve for all the hard work they did to pave the way for everybody else.
Okay, so our last slide is, basically, we've laid out for you today what the future can look like and some of the future challenges and issues that we have before us. And we've talked about what the past has looked like. And at this point, we would invite comments from you about whether you're prepared as a community to move forward.
What are we voting on? What are we voting on?
Okay, that brings to an end our presentation. Please stay and have coffee, there's tons of it there. And again, thank you all for coming.